Six thirty, would you sign your telephone and write with me to say the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Counselor Wood. Counselor Escobell.
Present.
Counselor Allen.
Present.
Counselor Knight Hardy. Counselor Hardy.
Present.
Counselor Naisley. Counselor Vendetti.
Present.
Mayor Villagrena.
Present. I would accept the motion to approve of agenda. Discussion please.
I would like to request that the meeting minutes for January third, two thousand and twenty be pulled from the consent agenda. I think that we need to review some parts of those minutes that may not be as thorough and accurate as we'd like.
Mr. Escobell. Any comments on that?
No, no comment.
Mr. Allen?
No comment.
Mr. Vendetti?
Nope.
And I have none.
And we're going to be requesting that item eight A be pulled from the agenda and item nine off, eight, nine, F be pulled from the agenda.
So. I would accept the motion to have those items pulled from the agenda.
I'm sorry, counsel, hang on. What do you want to pull?
Eight A, nine F, and then consent will be the December third minutes.
January third.
January third.
January third minutes.
Okay.
I would accept the motion to accept those agenda minus those items.
So I would make an emotion, I'm sorry, I would make a motion to pass the consent agenda agenda minus the meetings for January third meeting. And also minus item eight A and nine F.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Aye.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes. Now we'll go to consent agenda. Five A. We'll go to administrative information. Manager and council reports. Ms. Harding, any reports?
I just wanted to address a couple of issues. When we appointed Sean Garrett to interim city manager, we recognized what a large job we were asking him to take on, including his responsibilities as being head of our planning department. And so at that time, the city council had retained the hiring and firing authority. But after our training, and now that Mr. Garrett has had time to adjust to his new position, I think he has demonstrated good leadership skills and discretion. And I think to align his best practices under Searce's recommendation, that I would like to make a motion that we would restore hiring and firing authority back to the city manager slash interim city manager.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Escobell?
No discussion, I agree.
Mr. Allen?
I agree. I agree.
I agree. So roll call please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes.
I would also like to address another issue. I was going to write this down, but I think I'm just going to have to speak from the heart because I never was able to put it on paper. All the citizens that are involved know how many times the council in the last six months has had to defer to the response, no comment. And I'm not looking for sympathy, but that has been a burden for us because we aren't saying no comment to try to protect any political careers or to protect any bad actors that might have been in our city. We're doing it because we're called to be fiduciaries for the city. But having said that, I recognize that there is a point, especially with our relationship with the citizens, that I think that our silence is doing more harm than good. I think that we should expect the city of Florence to conduct itself in a professional manner and provide outstanding service to everybody we come across, and that starts with us as a city council. And I think that it is our responsibility that the citizens hear from us what's happening in their city and not from a news organization, even though I believe in free press and I still think that we need to hold the torch on that one. So I would like to make a motion tonight that by no later than Friday at four P M, the city council makes a public statement regarding the employment and termination of our former city manager, Mike Patterson. And that we try to make it as complete as we can now with, while respecting the laws and while not interfering with any other legal matters that the city may be engaged in.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Escobell?
I agree to a point, but legally, I think this should not come from city council. I think it should come from our lawyer as far as what we say or do not say because of what he's advised us. So that's where I think we should go from there.
Mr. Allen?
I would love if requested for numerous statements to be made, so yeah, I'd be fine with that. I, we need to make a statement.
I think that's very definitely that the city council, not being involved, but I do think that the city council needs to make statements on incidents that affect the public. And I'm all for it, but I do agree that whatever statement we make that our city attorney be advised and give us information on this statement. Further discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Aye.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes. Any, Mr. Allen had been sick with the COVID. Glad to see you back, sir.
Thank you.
And I'm free to ask, have you gone to any meetings outside your room?
I have not. I have not. So I don't have much of anything to say.
Mr. Vendetti? Meetings? Have you gone to any meetings that you want to inform the council?
Uh, no, I'm fine.
I've been to a couple of meetings. The first meeting that I would like to acknowledge is we had Searce training. And it was really very, very good. And on that hand, I would like to compliment our city attorney, I mean, our city clerk, our city manager, and our finance officer, because you guys were a big help in setting things up and doing things very well done. And we got all kinds of information. And I'm just about, I need one fourth more reading of the book plus all the handouts that I was given. But in all honesty, council and citizens of Florence, it gave us a lot of good information concerning what our rights are, what's the possibilities of what could go wrong, this and that. The other thing, I went to a meeting with the county commissioners. And it was very productive. And at that stage of the game, it was mostly concerning about what they were doing. We briefly stated about what Florence was doing. So if there's no other further discussion, we'll move on. Our next item is we have a scheduled guest speaker, Mrs. Gail McKinnon. Would you please come up to the podium and state your name and address, please?
Gail McKinnon, two zero seven Courts, Florence. I'm here representing the Florence Pioneer Museum, and last time I was here, I let you know that the museum had activities planned throughout the year, changing monthly. Our calendar is now set. And I have before you a multiple dated request for a special permit liquor license for four dates only. So five out of the twelve months, we will be serving liquor. The other seven months, we've got some other thoughts, ideas, plans. So the eighth of January was a lot of fun. We get, we had new people come in for the first time. It was very successful, and thank you very much for that special permit. We did serve wine. We're not selling, we're serving. February fifth is our next one, the first one on the request. And again, all we're doing is serving wine to our guests. March is open. We will take care of our refreshments for March. April, I'll discuss April in a minute. May, we're going to do the chili and beer again with the brewery. That was a large success, so we're going to do that again. That's our, one of our big fundraisers. So that is on the request list and our door, we want to be open only so those people who are enjoying a beverage and fellowship outside can bring that beverage into the museum without leaving it outside or gulping it down or not even coming into the museum. We want that open pathway. June, we've got plans for June, and then July is the last one that we're requesting. This is another one of our fundraisers where we have a night at the museum, and again, we serve wine at that one. So August, September, October, November, December, we will handle refreshments, non-alcoholic at that point in time for those receptions. But to clarify, April, April date, I left open only because we are partnering with Lafarge Wholesome, which I don't know if you guys know or not, but the Lafarge part is no longer part of their title. They will be selling, celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years this April. So they want to do it within the museum. They also want to have their new plant manager onboard. He comes onboard sometime in March. So they are tentatively planning minus his blessing to put things together. So I don't have a date for April. I don't know if.
Gail?
Yes.
You do have April ninth here on the request.
Okay.
So are you doing two in April?
No.
One in March?
We selected April the ninth, keeping with the second Saturday. And I had to put something down. I felt I needed to put something down, hoping that they would go with the date that we chose. Well, in speaking with Nicole Francis, she would like to do more of a family gathering. They want to provide the food. They want to provide the atmosphere, be in the museum, and at the same time utilize the street. So I will ask later for a street closure so we could do a picnic setting there. And the brewery has offered a special brew for that day, but that's up to them to do what they're going to do. So as of right now, I don't know what the legality is, but the only confirmed dates I have for you are February five, May twenty-one, July seventeen. April is still open. So if you want to discredit me for that month like we did once before, Jess, you know, we're good with that, but I'll leave that up to you guys. But that is what we've planned. And I did promise to come before you and explain our activities.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. That's fine, because I wanted to, in fact, I didn't remember if I put the ninth on it or if I just left it open.
So counsel, you guys have two options here. You can go ahead and improve the April ninth date. And then if Gail needs to move it, we can come back and just have you reaffirm that she's okay to move that date. Or we can pull that off the permit and she can come back to us March, February, March, and.
Or as soon as I know what what their plan is, because this is their celebration. We will go ahead and do our April month celebrating the cement industry. But just the open house, the, the interaction with John Q. Public and them will be at their, their date, whatever they select. So I told Nicole, we're open. So whatever, whatever counsel decides.
Do you guys have clarity from me?
Counsel, any discussion on this? Mr. Allen?
Why don't we wait till we get to that action item as far as the approval, and then we can discuss those and make that motion?
We will approve it when we come to the action item.
That's fine, but that, but that was the explanation. So I'm here if you guys think of any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Awesome job, guys.
Ms. Hardy?
I think we need to do public comments for matters not on the agenda still.
Cool. Okay, our next speaker is Paul Smith. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, sir.
My name is Paul Smith. I live at seven oh six West Eighth. What I'm here for tonight is I'm a little upset about shutting down the garbage on April fifteenth. It wasn't brought up in front of the people that have that service, and they do a fine job as far as I'm concerned. And what are they going to do with the garbage cans? The people, what, you're going to give them their money back or what? That's all I got to say. I think you're making a mistake by shutting them down.
Yes.
Let me comment, Paul. Sorry. The, I'm sure the rest of the taxpayers that are paying for the trash service that's not making any money would disagree. It's a losing business that the city is not making any money off of at all. I, I have this Florence trash service. I think it's a great service. But at the end of the day, all the taxpayers of Florence are paying for it, and yet every year we're losing money on it. This was voted on during open session. It was brought to open session. This is not something that was, that was decided without comment, that we went over the budget. It was in the budget. We put it in the budget so people would have time to find new trash service. None of the employees that are on the trash service are getting let go. No, we're not losing any jobs in Florence because of it. But we had to make a decision for everybody in Florence because Florence is not in the business of trash.
Okay, well, I didn't know what was going, I was just upset about the.
I, I am too. They were, they did a great job, but at the end of the day, you know, it's the Florence employees that are going over and beyond. Picking up trash and whatever you put out there, they were taking. And at the end of the day, we're paying more for that to go take it to the landfill. And we'd have to raise all your rates more than it wouldn't, it wouldn't have worked out.
I want, I wanted to say thank you for coming up with your concern and to give some more hard numbers. I think it was up to like twenty to fifty thousand dollars a year loss, not just not making money, I guess.
Yeah.
For anybody who's watching who has that same question, those are the figures that we were looking at.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your concern. Our next speaker is Kim Jordan. State your name and address, sir.
Tim Jordan, eight forty-four Sumo Avenue. This is a letter that I have. I don't have enough copies for everybody. It's just been my observations. It's been a hundred and forty-four days since former city manager's involuntary admin leave on August the twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. It's been a hundred and forty days since former city manager's termination on August the thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. And this is what I've heard at coffee chats from some of you and some of your staff. No comment. We need to move forward. We can't change the past. This matter is subject to an investigation and litigation. No comment means silence. It's an act of completely ignoring a person or a thing by resort to silence, especially as a means of expressing contempt or disapproval. You treating the victims that way? I've read the affidavit. Some of them worked in this building. So I want to know if you're treating them that way. Do you tell them no comment? We need to just move forward. This sounds dismissive. What is the city of Florence attempting to move forward from, and has the city of Florence shared those specifics with the victims? We can't change the past. What is in the city of Florence's past that the city can't change? Is it so uncomfortable and embarrassing that the city refuses to have a dialogue with the victims and also the public regarding it? This matter is subject to investigation and litigation. What matter or other matters are subject to investigation and litigation? Are the victims being informed of the progress and steps? Has legal representation been provided, and has the victims been informed of their rights under EEOC? Do any of you condone sexual harassment? Do you condone workplace violence? Do you condone assaults on staff? Do you tolerate any of these behaviors? Because counsel has been on radio silence for a hundred and forty-four days, other than those things I've heard. If you're being silent, this silent with us, the public, are you this silent with the victims? Staying, staying silent reads that it's okay and acceptable. What you refuse to say has just as much of an impact than what you do say. How and when will the city of Florence move forward with the assurances that this won't happen again? Or will the city of Florence simply hit the repeat button and stay on silence? Thank you.
Our next guest is Jay. State your name and address, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jay Stoner. My address is fifty-six fifty-five Bridal Spur Ridge Place, Colorado Springs. I'm here this evening just to introduce myself to the new council and mayor and, and staff. I'm the president and owner of Land Developers Incorporated and a member in J plus M Investments, which is an entity my wife, Michelle, and I formed to invest in bringing housing to Florence. We have been actively developing communities in northern Colorado and building hundreds of new homes since nineteen seventy-seven. Over the past forty-five years, I have successfully completed more than a dozen neighborhoods in northern Colorado. But now I live and work in, in Colorado Springs. After doing extensive research, we've determined that Florence has a significant need for housing of all types, whether it's apartments, attainable, smaller homes, move-up, custom homes. We even think since Florence is the banana belt of Colorado, that a active adult you know, no maintenance kind of patio home community would do well in Florence. One question you might ask is will, will, and the neighborhood, sorry, the neighborhood that we're proposing to develop or in the process of developing is, is called Willow Creek Estates. We believe Willow Creek will offer, first of all, the question is, will, will it be able to offer affordable housing for the citizens of Florence? And the answer is, this is very, this is a very significant challenge. Land development in Florence is more expensive than land development in other, other front-range communities. Home building in Florence is more expensive than other front-range communities that I'm familiar with. But at the same time, we're dealing with a lower average household income. So essentially, the challenge is that developers and builders have to sell homes at a, at a lower price that try to deal with higher costs in, in land development and, and construction costs. This means, you know, that we need, sorry, this, this means we need to see if we can ask for certain help, maybe called incentives from the city. For example, stable water and sewer fees that increase gradually over a specific timetable. That would help give us sort of a horizon on costs of water and sewer. Some financial assistance to help pay for some of the development infrastructure costs. And maybe maintain or reduce impact fees and building permit fees. In return, Willow, Willow Creek will, will do a lot for Florence. We're, we're planning to build two hundred and thirty-four single-family site-built homes and around forty townhome-style apartments. That will benefit Florence in a few different ways. Let me just give you a few citizens who currently work in Florence. Three minutes, is it up?
Yes, sir.
I'm just two seconds away. I'll finish, I'll wrap it real quick.
Okay.
Florence will be able to, sorry, citizens that work in, in around Florence will be able to live here. Increase retail sales, property tax, help existing companies with employee housing. The school district will receive more funding from the state based on an increase. The school district will receive more funding from the state based on an increase in student population. And more rooftops will encourage new businesses, new retail to locate in Florence. So in conclusion, developing a good quality residential community that's affordable for the citizens of Florence will take a team effort. We will do our part, we will do our best to provide an excellent neighborhood that's an asset for the city of Florence, and we hope the city of Florence will do your part to help any way you can. Thank you for your time and consideration, and happy new year, and a healthy new year.
Thank you. We'll go on to action items. 9A, approval for a special event permit, Florence Pioneer Museum, events to be held, 2522, 4922, 52122, and 71, 71722. City clerk, please.
Yes, council, so as Mrs. McKinnon explained to you, there are events that they plan to have. I would just like some clarification on how you would like to handle the date on the application for April.
Discussion, Mr. Allen?
I would suggest just leaving it for the 49th, if she needs to come back and change it till then, but if it gets set, that's fine.
Mr. Escobell?
I agree with that.
Ms. Harding?
I agree.
Mr. Vendetti?
I agree.
I agree also. So I would accept the motion to...
We do need to have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anybody wish to address this particular action item? Then I would ask for a vote, please, roll call.
I make a motion to approve the special events permit for Florence Pioneer Museum, 25, 49, 521, 71722. Second.
Further discussion? If none, roll call, please.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Nice, I'm sorry, Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
I am going to abstain, because I am on the board for the Pioneer Museum. Go on to, I'm sorry, we'll go on to resolution number 2022-0118A, a resolution adopting an agent policy and meeting rules of procedure. Discussion, or I'm sorry, Mr. Garrett, please.
So this is a resolution that we had discussed at the last meeting, and for that one, we didn't have any changes, just a few button up, as far as grammar and that type of stuff. So this is just a resolution that was discussed at the last meeting. If there's any changes you guys want, we can do that, otherwise we can formally adopt it.
Further discussion? Ms. Harding?
No, I have no questions or comments.
Mr. Escobell?
No.
Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. Vendetti?
I think it's well done.
I have none. Any comments from the public? None? Then I accept the motion, please.
I'll make a, a motion that we approve resolution number 2022-01-18A, a resolution adopting an agenda policy and meeting rules of procedure.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number 0118-2022A, an ordinance amending sections of Title 17, zoning of the Florence Municipal Code as described in Exhibit A. Mr. Garrett, please.
And so what this is, is this will be setting up, this will add a new section, and then amend it two sections, and set application dates for applications. Those application dates would be 30 days prior to the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. On a couple of them, it says that it's 15 days, which legally we can't do. We have to post a property, we have to put it in paper, we have to do all those things 15 days prior to that meeting, and so getting the application 15 days before the meeting, there's no way to meet those legal obligations. So this is bumping it out to 30 days. We can get the application review, any additional documentation or changes needed, we can get that back, and then get it scheduled on the planning commission.
Discussion, Mr. Vendetti? Mr. Allen?
No.
Mr. Escobell?
None.
Ms. Harding?
No.
Public comment? None? Roll call, please. I mean, motion, please, accept?
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance, ordinance number 01182022, an ordinance amending sections of the Title 17 zoning of the Florence Municipal Code as described in Exhibit A.
Second.
No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes. Next on the agenda is ordinance number 0118-2022B, an ordinance amending sections of Florence Municipal Code as described in Exhibit A. Mr. Garrett, please.
And so what this is, is this would be amending some of the sections of code to read city manager or designate, so a lot of the stuff with excavations and, and street construction. Sam's the expert on that, and so we would, we're going to defer to Sam anyways, and so a lot of this, if there's little emotion stuff, or, or little changes that need to be done, that either the city manager or where Sam could, could approve those changes, and so this just gives a little more flexibility on that, and allows Sam as, as the man who handles all the streets and all that stuff to review that and make those decisions as needed. Me and Sam have talked about this, he'll always bring me up to speed, and we'll have discussion on it, but this would just allow flexibility in that, and not have it required that it have to be approved by the city manager.
Mr. Allen, any comments on this? Okay, discussion? Mr. Allen, any discussion?
No.
Mr. Escobell?
None.
Mr. Vendetti?
I think a good idea.
Ms. Harding?
Yeah, I think it's a reasonable thing to do.
Public comment? No public comment? I would accept the motion to approve ordinance number 0118-2022B.
I make a motion to accept ordinance number 01-18-2022B. Second.
No further discussion, council? Roll call, please.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number 0118-2022, an ordinance approving Hayden's Hideout subdivision, primary and final plats in the city of Florence. Mr. Garrett?
Yes, and so what this ordinance is, would be, would be approving the preliminary and final plats. Due to the amount of losses being created, they have to, we have to have approval of a preliminary and a final plat. A lot of times on bigger developments, they'll do a preliminary, and then final plats will be done in sections, and so they'll build first 20 lots, and then they'll do the next 20 lots. For this particular one, he's just going to do it all in one, and so this would be approving that. All the minimums requirements to the subdivision regulations have been satisfied with this application, and planning commission did recommend approval.
Mr. Discussion, Mr. Vendetti?
No.
Ms. Harding?
No.
Mr. Escobell?
None.
Mr. Allen?
No, sir.
Any public input? I would accept the motion to accept ordinance number 0118-2022C.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance number 01-18-2022C, an ordinance approving Hayden's, Hayden's Hideout subdivision, preliminary and final plats in the city of Florence.
Second.
Any further discussion? If none, roll call, please.
Counselor Vendetti?
Aye.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have upcoming items. Mr. Garrett?
And so with that, one of those will be the Paceville ordinance, we were presenting a possibility for Sickley Bank, discussion on the spring cleanup, being that we're ending trash service, we might need to look at that a little differently, are we going to schedule that sooner or later? And then we'll have a planning commission appointment, and then a annexation petition for property located behind the elementary school here.
Thank you, Sean.
Having said that, is there a request for an executive session?
Yeah, it's my understanding that there are three executive sessions that are being requested. One is for a conference with the city attorney, for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions presented to 24642, Subpart 4B, as well as two discussions of personal matters under 24642F, and that those two, those two employees do not request that it be done in public. And that you are inviting the city attorney, the city manager...
And intermajor manager.
And the intermajor manager.
May I have a motion to accept, or going into executive session?
I'll make a motion that we approve executive session.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Counselor Hardy?
Yes.
Counselor Escobell?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Counselor Vendetti?
Yes.
Mayor Villagrena?
Yes, we'll take a five-minute session, then we're going to exist, executive session.